President.
Dr. Chang.
Here.
Ms. Poland.
Here.
Dr. Steinberg.
Here.
Dr. Thomas Farkason.
Here.
Ms. Wilcox.
Here.
Mr. Zidanowitz.
Here.
Student representatives, Lily and Sweeney.
Here.
Rochelle Yerabelli.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. And Lily, can you lead us on the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible.
Mark, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Okay, we do not have any revisions to the agenda order, so we'll move to public communications. These are comments on topics of interest from the public. Each person will have three minutes to provide comments. Board members do not respond to any of the comments. We'll start with anyone who has signed up in advance. And the first person is Jack Nevin. Jack, are you on the line of this?
Uh, yeah.
Great. You can go ahead and get started.
All right, I have three minutes, correct?
Yes.
All right. My name is Jack Nevin. I'm a senior at Hall, and I felt that I needed to make my voice heard about the possibility of returning to full-in-person school before the end of the year for middle and high school students. So I, I have already stated that I believe the action, action, that and action taken by the board to push towards a full reopening of schools before the completion of the backseat rollout is unwise. Obviously, this is all being debated on a national level with ever-changing CDC's guidelines. I am not here to enter that sort of debate here. However, I would like to examine the idea that returning to a full-in-person school in middle and high school is, is a necessary step to look at like mental health of, of our stu-, of students. And that idea has been maintained by the Board of Education throughout the reo-, reopening in the fall, right? So I'd like to look at the other side of the mental health issue that hasn't yet been addressed. I'd like to make it clear that there is mental distress caused by the thought of returning in, in full to school for some students, including myself, who have already endured high stress all year throughout its pandemic and identify the toll that it has taken on us. In my case, I chose hybrid along with other students because it promised one week in school followed by a week of remote learning, providing necessary recharge from stressful situation of being inside the building. So to prove that the situation inside the building is stressful, I'd like to paint a bit of a picture of Hall High School. At half-capacity hallways are always lined with people, especially main hallways. The CDC recommends that people avoid indoor spaces with large numbers of people. This is not a exemption. Schools are not exempt from this, right? So density for enclosed spaces are high at halls. It does not end in the hallways. Classes are not, classes are not amply spread out. I have classes with seventeen kids in my cohort in which it really looks like a normal class. I'm, I may be less than five feet away from other students, even though it's known by science that in aerosol form, COVID can travel well over six feet. There is also a bit, there's another issue, right? When we return to full in school, students will be two to three feet apart, right? So I'd like you all to imagine sitting within three feet of people on all sides of you for an hour and twenty minutes and noticing the masks on the people around you have gaps, are made of thin nylon fabric, are sagging or resting below the nose. Especially since the CDC currently recommends double masking to, to allow a tight fit. It is not just masks, though. Hybrid 2.0 allowed students to eat in the classroom. And, and the amount of students that eat in the classroom and take their masks off to do so will only increase. And when, when you double the amount of students eating in a classroom and half the space, you, there, there is a significant risk created. And I'd also like to point out that there are some students who have been weak links throughout this entire process. I have seen students in hallways not wearing masks. I have been in a class where one of my peers took his mask off and did not put it back on for the, for an entire hour of class. And my teacher did not say anything to stop him. Which was very concerning and distressing to me, right? So from a mental health perspective.
I just need to ask you to wrap up. I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'll finish up.
Thank you.
Of students who have anxiety, I, I, I just wanted to, I felt it necessary to make a point that I really have been having struggles and students like me have been struggling all year with this. So I, I just, I just wanted to ask, is the mental health of students who have anxiety to be in the building less important than the mental health of students who may be more isolated and like depressed, even though those are the students who have probably taken matters into their own hands and may have been like doing things on the weekends? That's all I had to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for sharing your thoughts with us. Is there anyone else who has joined us who'd like to provide public comment this evening? Okay, if not, we will move on to item this. We don't have any unfinished business. Item number four, new business. Item A, proposed calendar for the 2022-2023 school year. This is the first reading, so we will learn about the, this proposal this evening, but we will not be voting on it. And the recommendation is just simply that we review as a first reading the proposed calendar for the 2022-2023 school year. And I think I'll turn this over to Tom.
Sure, as you can see in your books, this is pretty much, we go two years in advance when we adopt calendars. So this isn't for the next school year, it's for two years from now. And, you know, calendars used to be the most debated topic at Board of Education meetings when I first started my career, and then there were kind of strictures put in place by the state, which no longer hold that you have to follow those strictures, but there is a far more uniform calendar across the state now. That tends to have February not be a full week's vacation, that looks at, you know, this would be the week of February vacation, and looks at that as a Monday and Tuesday with the idea of, you know, that this is already often, as we've seen this year, a very disruptive month. People that want to get ahead of themselves, tomorrow looks fine. I expect we'll have a full day in tomorrow, but Friday's certainly iffy with our weather as far as whether it's a remote day or in-person, but that's where we probably be looking at. So again, this puts the last day of school at June thirteenth, the first day of school at August thirty-first, which typically now is the Wednesday before Labor Day. And happy to answer any questions about it.
Great, thank you. And it looks like we have a question. Mark?
Yeah, so I've been, I've maybe waiting for this, this particular time because it only comes up once a year. And, you know, we talk about how many school days and, you know, we've moved to September and we're getting out much earlier in June now. And that's, a lot of people, I think, appreciate that. I, I'm proposing that maybe we talk about taking the Indigenous Peoples' Day, the old, the old Columbus Day, and actually go to school that day instead of having it off. So, and it'd be another day in school for the kids and that we just, we participate with that, that particular day in school.
It's a first reading, Rick. How that, this has come up before, Mark, I appreciate the question. Rick, how does that affect our contracts? Does that affect? I mean, these are two years out. We could certainly amend the contracts, but what's the, what's the issue there? I thought there was something.
So that, that's exactly the issue. So the holidays are negotiated with our collective bargaining unit. So it wouldn't impact our teachers' union or our administrators' union, but it would impact our other ten bargaining units. So we'd have to negotiate Indigenous Peoples' Day out of those respective bargaining agreements. Not impossible, but that's.
Yeah, yeah, not a, not a no, just a.
Rick, just for, I, it doesn't affect the teachers, you said, it says there's other ten bargaining?
Yeah, so the teachers' work, their contract mark is one hundred and eighty-five days. So technically, we follow the school calendar, but they don't, they're not paid holidays. So whatever we did, they would, yeah. So administrators is the same way. So it'd be custodians, secretaries, professional management, the remaining eight or nine.
And the thing there is that's a paid holiday for them?
It is, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Before we move on to the next question, I, I just wanted to jump on this one too and ask. I know when we spoke about this holiday a couple of years ago, it was brought up that a lot of high school seniors use that weekend to go visit colleges. I mean, obviously, that didn't happen this year, but would you say that this is still something that in normal times would be a weekend that students would use for that?
Yeah, that, that three-day weekend is one of the busiest at college campuses across the country with student visits. It kind of just happens to fall during that time when sports can get a break and kids can get a time away. Again, not a reason not to, but certainly that, that's a common day.
I just wanted to check on that. Thank you.
Yeah, hey, Deb, so I, I remember that question as well. And having a senior go through that and having her friends and things like that, I have paid particular attention to that. And there were people that did go, but I got to tell you, in her friend group, so it's only what I can bring to the table. It's, it's not a, it's not a statistical analysis by any means, but it's just what I can bring to the table is that it wasn't necessarily like a huge weekend in her peer group, and, and that's all I'm speaking about. In fact, I, I don't know if maybe one person went that weekend. You know, quite honestly, I don't think it would be that impactful just for college visits because now, you know, I've, there's people out there right now going to college visits and actually the ones that they can go to. Some of them are just off-campus, but I don't necessarily think that's a, I don't know. I mean, just from my perspective and what I, because I, I remember that conversation very clearly and I kind of paid attention to it, so.
Great. Liz?
Yeah, I was wondering if now, since we have the ability to control the calendar a lot more and that we could set, have snow days or not have snow days, is it worth having a discussion about bringing the February break back since the kids are in school more?
Yeah, it's a, it, this is, this is, this is one of those conversations that's very much unique to you. I am just your facilitator on this. So it certainly is one of those things, if you moved away from October tenth, that's something you could slide into February if, if that was something people were interested in. The snow days piece, you know, I think it's, to be honest with you, I think your solution that the board put forward with two snow days and then the rest being remote learning, I think has worked well this year. I think there was resistance by some people, but now that we're in that run of continuous days, I think people are okay with it. But just reminder, we don't know that the State Board of Education is going to allow that for next year in perpetuity. It's for this year, but we don't know what will happen next year, the year after, if we'll be allowed to continue with that accommodation for snow days. But any of those days in February or anything else, we can, this is a first reading. So any adjustments we make on this, we can present different calendars to you for the next board meeting for you to vote on, that's fine.
So maybe we should be. Maybe we need to have that information before we decide on the February break or not, do you think?
Yeah, we won't, we won't have that information by then. You know, I mean, we can always revisit a calendar. This isn't locked in stone. You want to put it out there ahead of time for parents, which is why we're so far in advance. We're earlier than almost any other district around by doing this this early, but it does give people the opportunity to plan. So I, I think it's fine, Liz, to say we'll revisit if this happens, or we can just look at it now with February vacations. One or two days or two or three days, two years away. So it's certainly something to talk about.
Tom, on that same note, any indication where you think the state might be leaning, what other superintendents are talking about, snow days? Do you have any insight?
I think it has been well-received by most superintendents that have gone. You know, there were a lot of superintendents that celebrated early on that we're keeping snow days and have now adjusted to trying to get remote days passed in once we've hit a certain number, so. But as far as what the state will do with the commissioner being rather busy right now and the State Board of Education hasn't met about it, I, I don't have any rumors scuttled about about it. I think it would be popular with superintendents to be able to continue the way we've done it this year.
Any other questions? Amanda?
Hi, I guess my one question as it pertains to that is, would keeping the snow days the way we have them now mean that all the kids, I mean, I'm assuming that it means they need to have the technology to be able to do that? So I can see us being able to work that out, but if that were a decision at the state level, have you got any sense of which way they would lean? Because I would assume they would need to have all that technology prepared for the kids to be able to access it.
I, you know, one of the benefits coming out of this pandemic will be the investment that's made in technology. People will ask whether we have one-to-one here. One-to-one typically means you give every child a computer at the beginning of the year and it's their computer. We don't do that, but we have more than one computer per student. And that's now true in most districts, and most districts have invested in laptops, especially in the inner cities. We've seen that initiative with the Dalio Foundation over the past year where laptops have been delivered. So I haven't heard that access question be as big of a problem in Connecticut as some people assume it to be. Doesn't mean it's not a problem, but that would be a local board decision to decide if their district was able to utilize those days. So here, I'm comfortable that we'd add the technology to people. I think we're always going to have that out to people.
I guess I'd be, if, if we had to give some early thoughts on whether we wanted to talk about this and vote on this at the next, at our next opportunity or to prolong it a bit, I, I would feel more comfortable looking at it a little bit later if it did allow us to get some more insight from the state level because the Indigenous Peoples' Day, you know, I can see the argument for that, especially with the Jewish holidays falling on Mondays in September. And as a Jewish woman, I know, you know, we're not on holiday, we're observing, or with Labor Day as a holiday, but with the first Jewish holiday, you know, people are observing. But then we have our second holiday is shortly thereafter, and you could do content on that day relative to Indigenous Peoples' Day. So I can see why there would be other benefits to that as well for continuity of learning. So it might be nice to just wait and then understand that a little better, especially as it pertains to the February piece.
My suggestion would be to still vote with a note to revisit, just so that we have a calendar to put up for people. Because the truth is, I don't know when the state's going to make this decision about, about that option with snow days. I'd like to say, yeah, that'll be by the end of this year, but this year they didn't make that decision until October, as you recall, so. So I, my preference would be that you have a second reading with one. You vote on and say, can we revisit this in October of next year? Because it's still giving people enough leeway, but it's also putting something in place that we're comparing it to or working off of. Just my thought, the suggestion. We don't have to do that. You can table anything at any time.
I guess I'd, do you have any sense of how the teachers feel about Indigenous Peoples' Day and February vacation? Because that, you know, they're an important perspective.
Yeah, the, the negative of this is that teachers that have children in other districts will have children that are at home and they're coming to work. That will be, that will be a common teacher perspective.
And then it seems like on the flip side for February vacation, if teachers have their, their kids in school while we're out of school.
So teachers that don't live in West Hartford, whose kids are home for that week and it's off, that's a common also refrain that we hear, yeah.
Any other questions?
Right, I just want clarification, Amanda. I'm curious, the, the technology piece that you think that you're concerned about, I guess I'm not understanding that, that piece.
Oh, I was just asking if we were to stay with the, with the ability to do our snow days as remote? Because I think what we're doing right now and the decision that we all came to for this year is working well. In order to continue doing that, it just means that the kids still have to have the technology at home. So we gave out all the Chromebooks and that's why that, that's why they can do it. Or that's why we can say it's remote, because we know that we've given all the kids the technology. So if we were to do it next year, I guess I was just wondering if we would still be able to give out that many devices.
Yeah, okay, I'm glad I asked because I didn't understand that at first. So Tom, I guess the, there's no, I mean, we're continuing with our IT budget and things like that, so for West Hartford.
I don't see that.
And we've been at this now over a year or just, you know, or not quite a year, but, and in the state has been too. So, you know, there's a lot of history here that, that, that we could take advantage of.
I think we're in a good place for those kind of days for the future.
But just as a reminder, though, this is the calendar, not for this coming year.
For two years, yep.
The year after that. Who knows by then? Any other thoughts or questions on this? Jason?
Yeah, sorry, thank you. So I guess, you know, my question is, is related to, again, the computer issue, but it's on the other side of, of the usage. You know, with purchasing so much electrical, you know, computer equipment, there is, you know, there is a shelf life to these things. And wondering if the district has a policy on e-waste? And what are the kinds of, you know, recycling or other kinds of, you know, second-hand use? Or what does that lifecycle look like for the district?
Yeah, typically, we don't get the same length of time with a computer that's used every day by kids in a school as you might get at home. We're looking at a three- to five-year replacement cycle for all of our computers, and that's included in the, the CNRE, the capital non-returning expenditures, which are part of the CIP. So your question, the answer is, we do, we do do computer recycling. We do do the environmental waste programs. We do have resales of our computers after they've been wiped and cleaned. Those are all put up at auction. And any of that, Jason, you know what, it's fair and I think a good point that at some point, either before the end of this year, the beginning of next year, it's appropriate to have Jared Moran come in and look in our IT director and present to the board about what we've seen this year, what we've seen for usage, what our challenges are and where we are moving forward in the coming years. And I think he could give a better description certainly than I can of that program on top of that. But it's, yeah, I'm comfortable with what we're doing there.
Cool, thank you.
All right, any other questions on the calendar?
I, I just wanted to kind of follow up on the February break only because I, I was in West Hartford when we had the full week and then when we went to the two days and kind of the pushback on all sides of things. But I, but I, I actually strongly feel that part of the rationale for going to the two days was an equity issue and it was about working parents and what a hardship that is on working parents who, who need to work during that week. So I, I think we should be like aware of that and conscious of that if we look at this and revisit it. I also think that most districts in Connecticut right now are at a, at an extended weekend and not a full week. And I guess for me, as a resident of West Hartford, I also wonder what message that sends to other districts, what our mindset is, what our values are. So I just wanted to kind of put that out in the universe.
Thank you.
It is the one thing I'd say is, you want to think about this in long term. You don't want to do one-year blips of one, I remember we did have a little bit of back and forth before we kind of finally moved forward just because you want people to have that planning purpose of that this is what our calendar is like. So, but again, completely your decision.
All right. So we'll make that decision, I believe, at our next meeting in the beginning of March, right?
Yeah, uh, no, the week after. It doesn't come up during the, the budget presentation stands alone and then, so the next regular Board of Ed meeting, it's not a budget.
All right. We will talk about it then on March sixteenth.
Yep.
No, thank you. All right, great. Moving on then to setting the date for the June 2021 high school graduation. And the recommendation is that the Board of Education vote to set the date for the graduation for Tuesday, June fifteenth, 2021.
Certainly, this is a big night for calendars. Two people on this call, I know, one from Hall and one from Connor are very interested in this. Remember, there was legislation passed last year. Typically in the past, I just announced on April first when graduation was. And the reason for the April first date was then if you had snow days, you didn't have to make them up. Legislation was passed and said if a Board of Education decided on the calendar and graduation, then it couldn't be pushed off as long as one hundred and eighty days had been scheduled or a full calendar year in this year's case by graduation. So, so that's, that's where we are for graduation. Again, the thought process on a Tuesday is that Tuesdays are better graduation days for us just in terms of rentals and setup on graduation in that over a weekend. Monday is a tough day. Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays are out, so you're really looking at Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. This is, this actually saves money being on a Tuesday, so.
So, oh, do other people have questions? Sorry. Amanda?
I guess I would imagine a number of people watching are wondering if we're envisioning graduation being in-person or outside similar to last year. I'm just thinking most people are, are wondering about that, so I'm fine with the date piece. I was just curious if there's been any preliminary conversation or if it's too early.
You know, this is one that's uniquely in the hand of the governor in terms of just the size of the gathering that we can have. So, I mean, when you have all of our seniors together at either school, that's four-hundred-person gathering. Now, I fully believe, in all honesty, that you can space out your graduates at both of our fields the way we can set them up and you can space and have an outdoor graduation that's safe. I also believe that if all of our students are back in school in March, April, May, June, then to say we can't graduate would be disingenuous from the government. Now, I think that there would be limits on the crowd. I think we'd have to look at how we spread out the crowd. But I guess my reaction, Amanda, is I'm not in anyone else's head, but I'm at least going to be optimistic about graduation right now. And I know that if things go bad, that unlike last year where everything is on the fly, we, on the fly, we have a very solid blueprint of what we would do. It may not be on that date, but we have a solid blueprint of how to go about a graduation during a pandemic that does celebrate everyone and make it a special day. And I think, you know, Mark and And I think, you know, Mark and I were both parents last year and I think we both felt our kids were, were honored appropriately.
Liz?
In that same vein, Tom, I know that you don't have a crystal ball and you can't make these decisions right now. But any idea on the timeline for this? I know that, and people have talked to me, they're trying to, you know, think about the senior activities, proms, safe grads, all that stuff takes time and planning. Any idea of how those decisions are going to be made in the timeline on that?
Yeah, those are, those are pretty solidly in the governor's hands right now because they're all under executive orders. So we saw some executive orders loosened yesterday. So I'll say I'm optimistic about graduation. I'm optimistic that there can be some form of a safe grad. The only thing I say about safe grad is that's not really a school sponsored event. That's done by parents and we allocate the space. But I, I think there's certainly ways that we can look at something like a safe grad at that point, perhaps, pending the governor. Proms, those are going to be a little more difficult. I mean, a prom for our high schools, you know, that's 700 people inside. The weddings aren't approved for that at that number now. So I, I'm not, I'm not as sure about that, to be honest with you. So it kind of depends on the event. The ones that you can do outdoor, which I think you could do, safe grad, parts of it outdoor and indoor. I think you can do graduation outdoor. Proms, um, that's, that's going to be, I try to, I try to delegate that to my friends Julio and Dan and have them deal with those questions immediately at their schools and what that can look like. So we're talking about it, we're looking at different options, but we don't have a definitive answer yet.
Any other questions? If not, um, I will try your, oh, we need a motion. Uh, can we have a motion to set the date for the high school graduations for June 15th, 2021? Anyone?
So moved.
Thank you, Lorna. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Liz. Um, any further discussion? If not, I will try your minds. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Say nay. Abstentions? And the ayes have it and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we'll move to the superintendent's report, the State of the Schools report. That's you, Tom.
Okay. Just to set this up. All right, you can all see this now? Everyone, am I still there?
Yes, yeah. We all muted.
Just weird. You go into this black hole when you're presenting. Okay, so, you know, we first did this, um, actually, the last time we did it was, uh, five plus years ago. And it was to look at where we stood at a place in time. And I felt like, um, it's an appropriate time now as we look at where we are in the midst of this pandemic. It's important to know, especially as we go into budget season and we've got new members of the board, but really it's important to remind all of us because there's things as we dug into this research that I found that, um, I was particularly fascinated by and hadn't expected. So, um, here's, you know, what I think about. We started kind of a comparison of 2000, 2015, 2020, um, present time. And 2000, um, you know, it seems like so long ago. Uh, it doesn't seem as long ago to Paul Gretchen and myself who were all teaching here then. Rosina had done her student teaching at that point. And, um, you know, this is a time period that, um, I can tell you has flown by, but 2000 seems like ancient history. But I remember, um, these moments in time, as do, uh, many of the people doing this presentation. So one of the things I want to talk about to start off, when we look at our school system, we need to look at the inventory of our school buildings. Some of you have asked about this before and this kind of, this slide. By the way, let me thank all the members of the executive team who helped me in my research and especially Liz, who did so much of the research and work putting this together and digging into old records um, to find out a lot of this information. This is the inventory of our school buildings. And you can see that we, you know, our schools range from 90 plus years old to five years old. And, um, everywhere in between, but certainly a focus on buildings happened as Chip presented in that post-World War II baby boom era. You saw the 50s were school building era, you know, where these buildings were built. That means a lot of these buildings are coming up on 70 years plus, 70 years old. And, um, it, it shows the importance of maintenance. They're in good shape, you know, they, they've got good bones, a lot of our buildings. You know, and that includes renovations that have happened over time. And this doesn't include all the renovations because there weren't necessarily large renovations like the Hall Science Labs was certainly one area, but that wouldn't be included in this. But you can see just the pure square footage, um, that are, that we work with every day. I, I've used the stat before, but, um, our custodians clean larger space than the Louvre every day. Just interesting when I think about the size of the Louvre. So one of the things about those schools when they were built is they were community hubs. They're not, um, it's, the schools were established to be the centerpieces of the neighborhoods, hence our kind of neighborhood schools. Which means really over the past seven years, we've had to retrofit, as you know, so much of our schools and the physical structure because of, um, our school security needs. And that really after Sandy Hook, we, we saw on two levels, um, from our parents and our professional staff and our Board of Education has always supported this. And you see on the top, the kind of physical improvements that we've seen, whether that be cameras, our management system, our card key access, how people get into schools. Simple things like everybody wearing a school ID and that's your access. That didn't used to happen when I certainly started working here. But also the operating improvements, you know, the addition of security guards across the district, who are former law enforcement officials with training to go through, that notice changes that have happened during the day and that do develop relationships with students. And it's not just about parking, but it's keeping an eye on everything. We take part in, um, emergency planning throughout the region. Eric Dancy, you know, our Director of Security is, as I've said, a national expert. And, um, he works with the entire Capital Region K-12 Emergency Planning Group. We do active training with the West Hartford Police Department. And then we do these scenarios and we focus on active shooter training, but there's also de-escalation in this emergency preparedness where it's not just about what happens in that emergency, but what happens if there's a chemical spill on 84? What happens if there's a massive power outage? What are those kind of staging concerns that we have that our schools will need? And we've developed plans for all those scenarios. They're actually on an app on every principal's phone so they can call up anything at a given time and know what the most recent active plan is if this happens, where do we go, what do we do? Enrollment trends, um, we've talked about, um, this kind of, um, look over time where we tend to think of ourselves as, are we at an all time low? Are we, you know, sometimes people think that. We're at a time that kind of repeats where we've been over time with our number of students. The dotted red line is kind of this decline over time with 10,000 being kind of the median that we see. And while we have declined, I do want to point out that this past year, that decline was certainly steeper, which has led to maybe our long-term enrollment projections being a little bit steeper. Because if you look before this year, before COVID, it had kind of flattened out this decline. And actually, we had seen increases in K before that time. And then we saw this kind of dip this year that's more precipitous. So I'm not sure if next year it looks like, are we going here and flattening out more? Is this continuing downwards? So that's something we're going to find out over time. What do the people in our buildings look like and who are we educating? Comparison enrollment by race, the first slide is numbers and the next slide is percentages. You can see one of the, um, one of the, um, differences here in this slide that people ask about is two or more races? Why was there nothing in 2000? These are all designations that the state uses and they're categorizations by the state. They're not our categorizations, but they're what we can call up when we look at, um, who our kids are. Two or more races in 2000 would have most likely been listed as Hispanic. So you can take that population here and understand that the growth in our Hispanic Latinx population is larger, no matter what, than any other, um, grouping. And if you include what we've looked at with these numbers over here, you see that that growth is actually more dramatic just in terms of numbers of people. You know, this is, you could spend, you know, a professor of demographics could spend hours on this slide talking about both rates, um, and talking about differences, uh, between groups in, in settlement and age that people settle in a community and numbers of children people are having. So when we look at it by percentage of our student population, we see that over time, we're certainly moving towards a minority majority population within our schools. If you tracked out what we expected, it's kind of slowed down a little bit over the past year and a half. But I would say, you know, we're looking at a time period of 2030 at the latest with trends, but more likely 2025 to 2027, 2028, where our white population would be less than 50% of our schools. Typically, that had happened about a 1% clip per year until the past year and a half, two years. So I think you're, I think it's fair to say 2030, um, is a comparison of this. And, and, um, this looks at by percentage. And it's, it's interesting to look at how our black population has actually stayed relatively stable over that time, which is important when we talk about diversity. Sometimes people want to make diversity a monolithic, um, element, which isn't the case. We've seen, we saw that Asian percentage increase up till 2015. Um, and we've seen that, um, relatively stabilized since then. And, and there's reasons for that that we might get to later also. We're looking at home language. Then we talk about enrollment by lunch status. And this, this has ramifications for our, um, what we've talked about with free introduced lunch and, um, our Nutrition Services Fund. And you see here this dramatic step of the percentage of our students, the numbers of our students in free introduced lunch. When we look at it by percentage, you can see the steps that we've doubled in the percentage of our students that are eligible for free introduced lunch over the past 20 years. And I want to reiterate to you what that means. So in the year 2000, for a family of four, that meant that we had 13% of our population with a family of four making $22,165 or less. In 2015, that meant $31,525 for a family of four. In 2020, one quarter of our students, um, if they're from a family of four, would average a yearly income of $34,060 or less. These are based off of, um, the American, um, the calculations, um, for the, for the poverty levels in the United States. And so that is more than one in four of our students. And with those needs come all the other needs as we see, um, as we see from nationally, um, the needs, if, if you're concerned about food and nutrition, it's going to affect other aspects of your life. And, and certainly that's understandable, $34,060 for a family of four in West Hartford family income. I think we can all imagine how difficult that would be. Comparison of enrollment by dominant home language, this is something I spoke about earlier in terms of, we see this growth of Spanish as the dominant home language for so many of our families. Portuguese, a lot of that comes from a increase in Brazilian population here in West Hartford. Um, a couple of things that jump out, both Mandarin and Vietnamese, you know, as we've seen a little bit of a dip from 2015 to present. Arabic and Nepali, you know, pretty much nonexistent in 2000 and Nepali completely nonexistent for speakers. But you look at the growth of, um, students whose home language is Arabic, has doubled in the past five years. Um, Nepali from nonexistent to a steady, um, and still an increase over the past five years, where that Russian population, where you saw a, um, outmigration from Russia to West Hartford in the 1990s, um, especially, um, has certainly slowed. And then all other languages, and we know that that's over 70 language that we're talking about with that slide. So we didn't really consider inclusion, diversity and equity advancement. We didn't really think of this as a standalone, um, commitment in the past. It was something that we did, we talked about, but, you know, when I think about my career during my 20 years, 25 plus years, but think about 20 years ago versus today, the commitment that we've made now in the Boards of Education, the Boards of Education over the years and during my time as superintendent, this has been, this has been a continuous focus and not on the back burner, but on the front burner. We've created the Director of Equity Advancement position and we have the best person, I believe, in the state, in the country, doing that job. And now we're taking that position, we're really creating much more of an office out of that with T-tron Special Assignment. And we're going to talk about some of the impacts of this as we move forward with ESSER Funding and Planning for the Future and how this office can really do outreach that has dramatic impact directly on children and families. We see it in the Equity and Diversity Council, made up of staff members from across the district to come together and talk about the work we're doing and how we can do it better. We see it in pre-K through 12, social emotional learning and social justice education where it's not just about, okay, are we planning for what we're going to do? But what are the sources we're using? What are the books we're using? And so some examples of things like when there's not textbooks, West Hartford has been at the forefront of creating textbooks and sources, especially for elementary school, that we can use and that are now used across the state. District-wide equity-focused, social emotional learning, professional development. So that really we've seen how social emotional learning goes together with equity. The pandemic has shined a direct light on this. Future Educated Diversity, we've talked about this program a lot because it's such a hallmark. And, um, we'll be presenting this, um, at the, um, Dream Deferred Conference um, in about three weeks. Rosina and a team of our educators that lead this work will be presented, um, at the National Conference. And I'm proud to say that we have some of, some graduates that were in FEOD are now student teaching in the district. And then I mentioned earlier about how, um, teachers are working together with Equity and Diversity Council. And then we've taken parents kind of mirroring that work, our parents and community partners working together on One Community for Equity. And part, that partnership with the schools and our community to look at where we are, not just as a school system, but as a town. And we've also, as you all know on the Board, made a commitment to equity advancement and have a vision for what that looks like. Um, and that will officially be adopted by the Board. EDC's research, past and current work will inform the Board of Education on educational equity policy that will support our problems with inclusivity and with transparency, which, um, this work, I know how committed the Board has been to this overall. And again, we are so fortunate to have Rosina leading that work and, um, that commitment from all of us. One of the ways we espouse that commitment is through our hiring. And we've seen that over time, our staff has gotten more. And we've seen that over time, our staff has gotten more diverse. It does not match the diversity of our student body, but we continue to make strides in this area. It's just that with 900 plus teachers, and then we're talking about teachers here. You know, it takes, it takes a large number of hires to really begin to make a dent. You can see over the past five years, you know, that's a 25% increase. As every year, that's been a marker that we've used and Rex's office has certainly searched far and wide for the best candidates that can further diversify our teaching staff. Now we talk about educational need, another aspect of who our students are. And just by pure numbers, you can look at the jump over the past five years in our number of special education students and our English language learners. This, West Hartford is a destination district because of the services that we offer and the expertise with which we offer them. It shows up in people moving here and choosing our community. And, and that's, well, it can be costly certainly. That's something to be proud of in how we educate our children. When we look at by percentage of need, instead of just numbers, you can see that that jump in ELLs a little bit greater and that jump in special education after a slight dip in the mid 2010s has certainly increased pretty dramatically over these five years. 504 plans, you know, I've talked about this and, and I don't think it gets enough attention with the general public. A 504 plan provides accommodations with a suspected disability, but it's not a special education plan. It's separate. It's an accommodation. So these in the past would have been things like ramps and the height of water fountains. But because of legislation and because of changes in what we are mandated as schools to provide, this now can be things like attention deficit. So that to the, in the year 2000, we had zero 504 plans, which is created by school staff, which is a plan for intervention throughout the year. It's revisited during the year and it's revisited every year. So it's, it's a large legal document that we go through with each of these families that request this. And again, this is at a family's request. We've gone from zero to 371 five years ago to 821 504 plans across the district. In the past, you know, five years, that growth is dramatic. And this takes a lot of resources and fidelity to plan out for these child, for these children, educational plans that are appropriate, that meet those needs. And again, it's not us identifying those needs. This is the, the bar on what creates this need has been lowered by state legislation and federal legislation. And really that brings up the question of what, you know, 20 years, you know, Gretchen and I had a long discussion about this over her career and my career and what's changed. It was fascinating listening to her talk about this. And I think during the budget process, it would be good. Or in answering questions tonight to really listen during her career, how this has changed in the tremendous burst of knowledge in special education. Instead of this being a hallway where kids are isolated, this kind of pullout, we have such an increased understanding of disabilities of each individual child, of where they're coming from and kind of moving away from just a label being a definition. And, and part of this is because tremendous advances in neuroscience. We understand the ideology of these disabilities better than we ever have before. We know how to work with children better. Breakthroughs in evidence-based practices from behavioral programs to things like events in technology. We didn't have an assistive technology person. Now we have, we have people whose expertise in assistive technology, because we see what an iPad can do. And I use that as the simplest crudest example, but an iPad in communication for so many of our children is such an advancement over what they had 20 years ago. Legislation over these 20 years, we've seen the reauthorization of IDA and ADA 504, state and federal mandates, guidance letters being sent from the federal government. And every year when there's a court case, it has an impact on us and what we have to provide. And really what, what it comes down to is this, there's an increased accountability that requires the use of evidence-based practices and has made so much of this a real legal process that it's not just about somebody has legal rights and the right to due process, but the actual paperwork that goes into it and just the fact that anyone can have a full file review. And by the way, this is appropriate. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with this, but the work that goes into producing all files on every child multiple times during their educational career here. And the PPT process and individualized education plans. And it results in higher standards for expected outcomes for our children. And that's a good thing. This isn't just get students through. These are, we now measure with all students. What are our goals and how are we bringing our children through? And the expansion of public school responsibilities includes preschool, where we're identifying children well before they're in school and we have our own preschool program for children that are identified as special education, which we've seen that grow tremendously, not just over the past five years, but certainly over the past 20 years. Our post-secondary program, which now goes to the age of 22 and didn't necessarily previously exist. But one thing that's not talked about, West Hartford, we have, we have so many private schools in town. We have the opportunity to have partnerships with these private schools. But there's a legal responsibility with private parochial magnet schools that an IEP for any child that goes to that school in your town. So it's not just a child from West Hartford that's going to say KO that has an IEP. It's anybody at Kingswood Oxford that has an IEP. Because that school is in West Hartford, we can be called in for testing. We are the managers of that case and we assign a specific caseload to a department supervisor who deals with private parochial and magnet schools, that we're responsible for those plans. And implementations, a little bit different in those cases, but we attend those meetings throughout the year. So you look at what's, so what's the end result of this? You know, in general education, you look at over the past five years, 869 staff members versus 821. I've told you before, when you look at just the numbers of elementary teachers, more than 30 elementary teachers, less, we want to talk about closing a building. That's, that's more teachers than existed Duffy, just at the elementary level of closing. So you see our staff across the district that's devoted to general education has stayed flat and has actually decreased in the past five years. The staff devoted to special education has increased and it's, it's dramatic. And when we talk about costs, these are the costs. And really we see so much of this in paraprofessionals and teachers assistants who do such good, important one-to-one work with our students. So, you know, paraprofessional was pretty even 20 years ago in terms of whether they worked in regular education or in special education. And TAs in special education almost didn't exist with about 20. Now you see how this has just ballooned and really the special education work of paraprofessionals and of teaching assistants is their dominant mode of work. So certainly our student needs, as they've developed over time, have had a dramatic impact of what our schools look like and what our budgets have looked like and what our employees and hiring profile looks like. Now what about curriculum timeline? We kind of look at the past 10 years. We didn't go back into No Child Left Behind. We certainly could have over the past 20 years, but even when we look at Common Core State Standards, you see the adoption of these, we're talking about, now that was 10 years ago. Implementation happened after, but you look at just in this 10-year block that we're sitting in, from Common Core State Standards to SRBI, scientific research-based interventions, these are the tier one, tier two, tier three programs that were mandated to have, that actually work with our kids to meet them where they are and make sure they get the help that they need. Before necessarily there would be any designation of a child. Smarter Balance, a new method of assessment was put in place in 2014, you'll remember. Then we had the SAT established as our high school benchmark five years ago, and then new state standards for science agreed to at that same point. Then the Connecticut Next Generation Accountability System taking effect in 2016 that focused on growth measures instead of just raw scores. So we're actually looking at the same students, not comparing, you know, one group of kids versus a different group of kids. Again, the pandemic has kind of made it more difficult to make some of these comparisons. We see the graduation changes that affect the class of 2022 that the board has dealt with over the past few years. And we put in the mandatory course offering in Black and Hispanic Studies that West Hartford will pilot next year. Because this is unique in that the state has previously said you'll have to have a course. This, this is the first time the state is saying you'll have to have this course. And every state, every school in the state, every high school will offer this course, which is why we wanted a part in creating that course. And we did have seats at the table at the state level. And we want to be a district that offers it first, so we can look at how it fits in what we do well. And, and I do want to say at this point, because behind all of this is our five-year curriculum review process where Paul and Gretchen and Rosina, and we meet repeatedly with a large committee of teachers and administrators to go through our curriculum, what courses we offer and are they meeting our needs? And those mean, those needs means not just our students necessarily interested in a course, but are they, are they getting the information that they'll need? Are they learning the tools that they'll need? Do we fit what we're preparing our graduates to be? And this curriculum review process isn't like pretty much any other districts. It's one of the things that is definitely a hallmark for us and allows us to do things like look at the text that we're offering in real time and make changes when we need to to, to meet the needs of the day. Comparison of average class size, I just want to reiterate to people that we have smaller class sizes than we've had in the past, even though, you know, I, I guess one thing, I guess this is a good time to say it. Our per pupil expenditure rating in 2000, we were 60th out of 169 towns in the state of Connecticut. And right now we're 102nd out of 169 towns in the state of Connecticut, but we have smaller class sizes. Our, our spending is going directly to kids. This idea of, and what will affect kids most dramatically is our, are those classes. And again, this year, yeah, those are lower than they will be in the future. Not necessarily next year, the year after. But this is a reflection of the pandemic as we've seen our class sizes decrease this year. But I thought it was important to put it in there to note, this is what our schools look like now in comparison with the past. Students taking advanced placement exams, the number of exams taken. You know, the stories we've told it, but, but man, it's an important story to tell. Our total high school enrollment, this is 11th and 12th graders because most AP exams come from those grades. Certainly there's exceptions and there's sophomore classes that are focused on this. But when you look at the growth in our total number of test takers, when the populations may be declined and the total number of AP exams taken, this, this doesn't look like any other district, this growth. And what makes it really special is the number of students scoring three or higher in advanced placement exams. That as we've increased and opened the doors, instead of keeping kids out as so many places still do foolishly of saying you, you're not qualified for this course, by opening it up, we have not watered down. The number of students scoring three or higher has grown and what's more important really is our AP Equity and Excellence Number, which is the percentage of our graduates that have passed, scored three or higher on an advanced placement exam. We're at 65%. That, that for, there's no district over 50% that looks anything like us in those slides that I showed earlier. There just isn't. And this is, if you want to show West Hartford's success and, you know, people, people accuse all I care about is AP, it certainly isn't. I care about people challenging themselves. And this is an example of our students choosing challenging coursework. And 65%, two-thirds of the people that go through West Hartford Public Schools have earned college credit. That's just college credit from advanced placement, because a story that we don't necessarily tell enough. We have the advanced placement exams where we're looking at this year, actually a record number of tests. I was surprised. I thought less people would take tests with the pandemic. That hasn't been the case. But the enrollment ECE courses, these are, you know, often referred to UConn co-op courses, but these are early college experience courses. We see, you know, a 65% increase in the number of ECE enrollments and in CCP enrollment, CCP, Capital Community Prep. This is a partnership with our community colleges where courses that are exist, that exists within our schools are articulated with a community college course. So those students are getting dual enrollment. This happens in some of our allied health courses. This happens in some of our technology courses, but you look at the pure number of students. And sometimes I used to put in a slide when I did this, I think last time, and you talk about each credit and how much your credit costs. But I don't really want to put it into just a numbers and cents, a dollars and cents equation, because the fact is it's not just about the money saved for families, which is hugely important. But it's about our graduates know they can succeed because they've done it here. They go with college credits, which can A, save money, but also maybe make for an easier course load where you're not overloaded one semester where you have to take six courses. Where maybe that's a semester where you can only take five or four courses, depending on what you need that year. So very important for our graduates. Closing the achievement gap, you know, here we'll talk about smarter balance and advanced placement. And despite the gains noted here, students of color are up seven points, seven points in mathematics during the most three-year trend where literacy, which started at a higher place, was relatively flat. This isn't something that we hide from. We still have a sizable achievement gap. It's roughly 20 points between students of color and our white students on state assessments on the Smarter Balance test. What's interesting in the advanced placement, it's the 10-year trend that the number of students of color participating in exams has increased by 150%. Even during that time, the average score has increased. So what's happened there is the opportunity, the gap on AP exams instead of being 20 points earlier in kids' high school career, where we've seen elementary and middle school, that's actually down to six points there in a percentage of threes and above. Still exists and we need to make sure that this achievement gap isn't an opportunity gap, which too often it is, and that we're making sure every child knows they have the opportunity to take, take challenging courses. And we have to remove all the impediments that might keep somebody from taking that course. I think it's very important that we continue to talk about computer science, made it a goal before the pandemic. Because what computer science leads to isn't just high-paying jobs, but it shows success in college and success in work. We've seen a 31% increase in overall enrollment in computer science courses during the past five years at our high schools. Now this is kind of a 3D slide here where it takes different groups and puts them in perspective of where they are versus kind of where they should be based on their percentage of the population. Asian students overall are six points above their target in taking computer science, meaning matching their overall percentage of students in our buildings. Black students, we've seen an overall increase, but they're still two points below their target. But again, much smaller than the achievement gap there. Hispanic students, we've seen a 3% increase, which has halved their distance from the target as it did with black students. And white students, it's actually the exact same story. Their distance from the target as to do with black students and white students, it's actually the exact same story. The story here is a gender story. And you know, we have Jackie Coroselli who's a national expert in computer science overseeing our work here and. And really the effort is we've seen, you know, our students. Our female students increase in their willingness to take computer science. We got a lot of work to do. Um, you know, if males and females are each roughly 50% of the student body. We want that to end up with 50/50 and we, we see and we know the evidence. Of what computer science can do um, for our graduates, so certainly getting. Females interested engaged is something we've done and you can see that growth, but it's a focus for us in the future. How are our students doing with graduation? Until we're at 100%. We won't be satisfied, but remember this is in four years, not five years or six years. 96% of our students up from 92% in 2000, over 20 years ago. Um, are graduating within those four years. At Conner and Hall and the, and the numbers are very close between the two schools. College acceptance and what students are doing, so overall, you know, about 90% of our students. End up um, moving on to college, two or four-year college. What we've seen grow over the past 10 years is people matriculating in four-year institutions. Where that's gone up 5% um, to 78% of our students now. Now, these numbers are fascinating because these are norm reference tests. Which when you look at the national average, they shouldn't go up dramatically. Because you're looking at a 200 to 800 point scale in the SAT. So the median should be around 500. It's actually around 510, 515. We've gone up 91 points during those 10 years in our average SAT scores. Again, you're looking at over the hundreds, so you can think of it kind of as nine points. Our PSAT score growth is dramatic. And our ACT, which really we don't, we don't plan for our ACTs. Um, in the same way, since it's not a state assessment, we've seen tremendous growth there. And what's even more fascinating, we've done this with everybody taking the test now. Not just with those students who are definitely college-bound having taken the test. So these numbers are actually, in everything in here, these are some of the most stunning. Numbers of West Hartford's success vis a vis the state and the nation at large. In terms of how our students are performing and they do that, we do not have one single SAT prep course. I believed and espoused from the beginning. That SATs in any assessment will inform our instruction, they won't drive it. Good instruction and good learning will lead to increases on SATs. On ACTs, not necessarily this cramming. There's certainly things people can do that help them learn anyway, so that's a good thing. Um. And then kind of acceptance in where people are going, we've talked about this a lot and I included last year with 2020. Because it's hard, you know, we can make a lot of judgments from this year. Less people went out of state this year. The pandemic definitely had a, had a effect on where people chose to go. And um, am I willing to move out of West Hartford and leave? What's, you know, for a variety of reasons. But if you look over time, what we've seen is less. Um, private out-of-state, we've seen a slight decline there. And that's pretty much purely replaced with um, an increase in public instate. Um, Yukon CCSU and certainly this jump this year. Um, which uh, there's a lot of judgments we could make about that, but that's. That's what our graduates look like in the choices that they're making. Honors. And these are kind of grouped and I, I just want to talk about. A few things here and you know, it's always hard to. Single anybody out because these pages, I actually asked Paul to put these together and it started with 20 pages. Um, because there's just so many things that have come out, so. You know, how highly our high schools are ranked and this is whether it's niche, whether it's Newsweek, US News and World Report. Our recognition of our excellence is STEM schools, Joy Rights Recognition. Um, PAMST is the Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. Um, you look at this and I can tell you our staff members in our schools. Um, continue um, to just impress and this isn't, this isn't including all the people that. Every other recognition and being, you know, I mentioned Jackie Coroselli with um, AP Computer Science. People like Kathy Coghill, you know, selected as National AP Daily Video Instructor. Um, for AP Research, just so many honors for so many of our staff and our schools. But then kind of the fun one is just. You know, our students and this is a small representation of the academics. Um, at the top of some of our students, but um. You know, the US Senate Youth Program winner and I can announce here happily, 2021 Natalie Dela Cruz. Has been uh, named US Senate Youth Program winner, one of the two from Connecticut and there's two every year chosen from Connecticut. And just as I announced Natalie um, and congratulate her and Connor is so proud of her. It's appropriate to point out that in 2020, one of the two from Connecticut was Nina Feinstein from Hall. And in 2018, one of the two from Connecticut was Megan Striff Cave, one of our own. Board representatives um, who are one of two representatives. And you look at how West Hartford, sorry about that, you look at how West Hartford has um, been represented there. You look at all of these from National Recognition Program Scholars. Merit semifinalists, that's this year. I can't release the name checks. I don't know if they've been notified yet. Um, but oh no, they've been notified semifinalist. We know about finalists now too.
All, all eight are finalists.
Yes, they are. I just didn't know if I could say that yet because I'm not sure if they've been notified, but I think they have, which is. Stunning, so I guess we can say it, all eight of the semifinalists have been named finalists, so congratulations um. To everyone, you know, Connecticut Kid Governor um, being from um. Norfelt last year, Myra Stanfield, um, who represented our schools so well. This one here, 43 National AP Scholars. Private schools and other schools and they have one or two. This is a news article in and of itself. We have 43 from our two high schools. And once again, we have one of the two state AP Scholars from last year was a West Hartford student. And it's not like we just focus on academics, which it would be appropriate to. But we've had tremendous athletic success over the past few years. Whether it's all-state athletics, state championships in boys and girls across, boys soccer, boys indoor track. Um, and then visual arts, all-state musicians and then of course essentially Ellington and Hall's success there. But what comes next? Challenges, our opportunities and our commitments as we look to the future. COVID-19, that's impact on us, um, we cannot minimize. And you know, our goal is to get our students back. Out of hybrid and I'll, I'll be the first to say it, the sooner the better in March because we've seen. Um, we've seen some of the tolls it takes and we're better off than so much of the country. We're better off than so much of the state. We didn't take long breaks to go into um, remote learning. But when we look at attendance, if we use high school as a benchmark, I'm just going to pull a couple of things out. You know, typically we see about 6% chronic absenteeism. Um, over the past five years and that's what we've seen this year with our students that are in school on the days they're supposed to be in school. But when compared to remote learning, we're at 9 to 10% in the remote setting. So that's a significant um, attendance issue that we have. Academics, there's both, it's, you know. We're looking at, we have some metrics now for K through two academically. That are really interesting. We tend to use grade two literacy and numeracy benchmark measures as a board goal. And part of that is because reading by second grade and into third grade is really important. It's one of those things. You want people to have it up to then you're building towards that and. It's important to note that people expect learning to be linear and learning isn't linear. It's kind of in these chunks and we can see jump. Then we can see a flattening. It's not always at the same rate. In past years, we've used um. We have data from fall and winter and the spring. We don't necessarily have that. We don't have data from last fall. But if you look at fall and winter in grade two, I do have some good news. I don't, we don't see in Paul and I just talked about an hour ago as, as we're looking at the data. We see a very slight dip in gain from fall to winter in numeracy, but not dramatic. Um, we don't see dramatic losses in um, literacy there. That's grade two. That's really important because our kids by the end of grade two, reading is something they, we really need them. Um, we need that fluency with. However, in grades um, one and K, we do see some drops in early literacy and for numeracy and people. You know, there's this idea that we shouldn't ever be measuring and we shouldn't ever be testing. We need to do measurements that we know where our kids are so we, so we know where. Um, we can work with them and the fall baseline data is relatively on par. Um, with historical performance, but our growth is the issue. Um, in grade one, we generally see an average of 10.8 points of growth in numeracy from fall to winter. This year we saw 4.8 points of growth. And literacy, we generally see 2.9, 9.2 points of growth. This year we've seen about 4.9 points of growth. Now, again, this is a snapshot, a moment in time. It could be this year's class. But these are the things that we need to actively begin um. Begin addressing um, and it's going to need that extra time. In middle school, in the remote middle school, we see a trend that's deeply concerning. In that the number of students, the percentage of students with a D or F in a core academic class. Typically you might see 18% of students with a D or F in a core academic class. In remote learning this year, that number was 27%. Now, that number could be skewed for a lot of reasons with students that perhaps. Have greater academic need are enrolled in RLE. Perhaps students that have more social emotional issues in that they're deal, could be dealing with. Their own health risks or the health risks of a family member that are creating concern. But for people that say things are going okay everywhere. We've got, we've got evidence that we've got interventions we need to take. And that's going to be as we've said, Saturday Academy, Summer Academies, extended school days next year. And that social emotional piece, you know, it's interesting to um, we had a caller earlier talk about. Are we only thinking of one element of social emotional? Not at all. We're thinking of all aspects of social emotional. You know, we talked about elementary school students last night, I don't know if anybody, and I just saw the clip. Um, from President Biden's um, uh, town hall. Both with a child that I think is second or third grader saying, I'm afraid that I'm going to die um, if I get COVID. This fear is real for kids. This fear of what this can do to them has an impact. But then the emotional and social take of not being next to somebody in class. We all are taking part in this meeting right now by um, video. Many of you have two screens open and our students are doing that while they're in class too and. That kind of being present in class with your classmates, whereas. Not only is something going on, but I might be able to turn to my classmate and say, hey, what did you get here? How did you do that? Which. Which saves me from having to teach everything either from the teacher or to myself. And that working with that student next to you and building those relationships. And we've been able to do it through hybrid. But it's one of those things that I see as a real danger of remote learning. It's, you know, next year we may still do um. There will still be elements of um, streaming and I do want to say to anybody. You know, when we go back full-time, people, there will still be students that will choose to stream. I understand that and. Um, that's realistic, but. The importance of being with classmates and the social emotional. Impact of not being there is real for our kids. And then the economic impact, we've seen the amount that we've had to spend this year and how we've had to expend money, but. The economic impact in our community and on our families, as they, as so many have seen businesses fail. And people have lost their jobs and. How do we reach those kids and those families, make sure they're getting the help that they need? And all of this has happened in. Where if we don't use an equity and social justice lens to look at who's being impacted, we're not, we're not serving our kids properly. Or our families properly, because all of this is happening at the same time. And we need to make sure that, and Rosina, this is her clarion call to make sure. We're meeting the needs of our community overall in so many ways. Then we see the state budget impact and if the state chooses to flat fund things, West Hartford becomes a loser and I'll talk more about this during. Um, next week's budget presentation, but Governor Lamont's initial budget. Flat funded things which cost West Hartford almost a million dollars over the next couple of years. From what was promised previously about our ECS funding. West Hartford being underfunded by ECS over the years is a continual story. It has gotten better over the past couple of years. We expect it to continue to. But that was delayed by the governor's flat funding. So that's something um, we're certainly going to be coming to. School schedule I put on here because we do, a lot of people that have said we should look at block scheduling and. Really one of the challenges, the reason this is under a challenge is that under our current schedule that we'll go back to next year. It is more difficult to meet our graduation requirements for our students. So how we look at schedules is something that over the next year, we're going to need to be talking about. And then school infrastructure, you know, you guys unanimously approved a capital improvement plan budget that. Prioritizes our buildings and safety and health from our buildings. And we need to make sure we continue doing that. You saw the ages of our buildings. It's just so important that we keep that commitment. Opportunities though, you know, we have $4 million in funding and perhaps more. From um, the American Recovery Act coming in the future where we can do. Academic supports and intensive tutoring, intensive assistance with students to make up for that learning loss. To make up for that learning, to make up for those. Those things that kids may have missed if they've been remote all the time or if they just haven't achieved what they need to achieve to be. Um, where they need to be. And with that, we also need to strive for our family and community connections to make sure these families are. Are utilizing the schools in a way um, that meet their families' needs, not just educationally, but also throughout our community. School safety and the social emotional wellbeing I've talked about. We need to spend here, we need to look at social work and how we're doing it. We need to look at mental health. As our students are coming back, the impact of this past year is going to be with us for a long time. And we still need to work on what does remote learn? What did we learn from it? How did our staff develop? What did we learn about the digital divide? And how can we ensure over the coming years that we have all the technology? Necessary to prepare kids for the world that they are clearly going to enter now. Where remote work and the use of technology is going to be more and more important for our graduates. Commitments. This is something that the board has always um, supported and my team puts forward and we all believe in. We want to advance equity, we want to honor diversity and we want to foster inclusiveness. Not just within our schools, but within our community and do our part to make sure we're supporting that. We want to reduce those achievement and opportunity gaps that we talked about earlier. We want to eliminate them. We know it's a job bigger than just something for the schools. It's a societal question. We will increase staff diversity. We'll continue to make this a focus year in, year out. We want to enhance our post-school outcomes for our special education students. As we see our post, as we see these students moving into postgraduate education, we want to make sure. That we don't turn our back on any students and that these students are ready for a world that they've been provided with all the supports necessary. So that they're ready for the type of living with their family support for independent living when appropriate. And that we've done all that we can um, to have them ready by the time they move on from our educational program. And, and it's important that we call that out directly as a commitment to all of our families. And we want to maintain our rich curricular programs in support of student interest, learning needs in 21st century. And we want to maintain our rich curricular programs in support of student interest, learning needs and 21st century skills. We want those, when students are choosing their courses, we want them excited. We want them to be challenged. We want them to know that there's something that appeals to their interest. And maybe some that they never thought they'd be interested in, but okay, I'll take a chance doing this work. From a, from a, from a wide um, diverse areas of content. So the final slide, slide, clear paths, bright futures, no limits. It's almost eight years ago um, at my first convocation, where I put that forward is what we wanted. Clear paths, not just that there will be clear paths because we know that there won't be, but that we will clear paths as a verb and do everything we can to make sure that our students have clear paths so that there's bright futures for every child that we have. And that we will not allow limits to be put on our children and what is possible in their lives. This is, this is, it's not just what we need to do, it's what we have to do. It's a moral call. It's why we entered this profession. It's why you all ran for the Board of Education. To make a real difference for the lives of the students of West Hartford. And you know, as I um, finish, I um, just, I want to thank you because during my seven years and, you know, coming up on eight as superintendent, the board's support and your support over the past couple of years and our board goals to push, to challenge, to always say, where can we be? But also to support us, and this is, this is bipartisan with budgets and commitments to equity and commitments to social emotional learning, that a lot of places, that's where they're looking to cut. And our kids can't have it. And West Hartford is fortunate. Um, and I hope this is getting, giving you a picture of where we've come from, both in the relatively distant past before, you know, before our kids that are on this call were born even, um, but just five years ago, where, you know, some of you were on the Board of Education and just the difference that has come up before then. And I hope this gives you a kind of um, pattern of West Hartford before we go into the budget and it shortens the budget presentation. So I don't have to repeat all of those things, I guess, as we go into budget. So I know that I could have stopped at any point. You probably have a thousand questions and you know, these are all presentations that can come up time and time again, but happy to answer questions and members of my team. And again, thank you to them for their work on this. So.
Thank you. Thank you for that really comprehensive uh, review. I'm positive that we have questions. So uh, for board members, if you have a question, please put a question mark in the chat box and I will call on you in the order in which I see them. Uh, Lorna.
Yes, thank you, Tom. Thank you very much. Um, lots of information, but, but good information. I, I do have a couple of questions. One is um, and I always appreciate your candor in acknowledging the diversity makeup of the town and uh, rather of the student population. And with respect to the recruitment of diverse staff and how, yes, it has increased, but I always appreciate how you acknowledge there's more we can do as well. Because looking at the statistics, if the number of diverse students is increasing and the number of staff is increasing, you know, it's kind of just matching. It's match to match. We certainly want it to be a bit more um, a bit more of a, of a increase. My question is in respect to the curriculum and how the state yes, has required the offering of uh, studies in African-American or Black history and, and Latinx history offered it. Uh, certainly we think it'd be best for it to be required, but certainly appreciate that it's being offered. I believe you mentioned that it's anticipated around 20, 2030 roughly, that the now minority will likely be the majority. Before I continue on, I'm seeing you nod. Okay. So recognizing that that is kind of what we're projecting, would you say that it really strongly advocates for that offering of those studies to really become a requirement? If our town is going to um, be a bit, a lot more pronounced in diversity as it is now?
You know, I think that that's a, it's a really interesting question and a really interesting way to look at, in that does the state require a course because districts won't do it? Um, whereas in the past, we've had Asian history, we've had Latin American studies. We have US history through the African-American experience. So I think to answer fairly, Lorna, yes, the state needs to do this for those people that are late adopters. It's incumbent on us to not wait for the state. So yes, we should be looking at what are we doing with Asian American history, Asian American studies, Asian literature, all of those things that if students are choosing to take that, then that's, that's good. Um, Latin American studies, African-American studies and how does it? But I think important just, not just to look at an individual courses, how do we inculcate that? Through K through six, how do we inculcate in our courses in the middle school? And then how is it in our literature? How is it in how we prepare our graduates? Because my fear is that if we have nothing but mandatory courses, then we're not allowing students to meet their individual interests, be they in the arts or anywhere else. So we need to expose students through, and we can't count on one course to do the work. This needs to be K through 12. And Paul, I don't want to answer that question without you because you and Rosina both do so much of this work through the curriculum review process.
No, absolutely. Thanks. Um, I think, um, I, I mean, I love the question and one of the, one of the difficulties with the mandate that the state has given us right now, for instance, is, you know, uh, we start with the course that we already have that exists, which is the US course. Um, the state has said, no, 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 this course needs to be an 11th grade course. It needs to be uh, something that kids take after US history. Um, and, and so that kind of put us into a box right away that, um, I mean, it's a good thing and it's a bad thing. It's a good thing in terms of, okay, that's going to mandate that we have two courses um, in succession within our high school social studies program that, that have um, you know, a very specific focus and a very specific theme in which uh, they're approaching their study of uh, their study of uh, history. Uh, but in the same regard, in terms of that question of student, what can students fit in? It, it then puts potentially courses in competition with each other. Um, if, if I'm a student that's interested in this, but I can only take it in one year versus both years, um, how does that work? It also, the state's also, uh, it is unique that it's the first time the state has said, you need to use our curriculum. Because typically what the state will do is, is say, you need to teach to this body of standards. And then we have flexibility as a district to kind of design the course around those standards. And quite honestly, without being braggadocious, we, we think we're pretty good in West Hartford in doing this. Um, and, and now we're kind of stuck in a box of, okay, we're going to take exactly what's given to us, which is why we wanted to be on that uh, on that front end of it. But they, they've put up some interesting constraints. You can't offer it as two half-year courses. It must be a full year course. So that changes how, how it gets offered. Instead of being able to offer it as two separate semester courses that students might take over their junior and senior years, mixing in other elective, other half-year electives. It has to be, you know, it takes a full slot. So, so just the whole concept of mandates, uh, while it comes with some good, it comes with some, um, with some difficulties as well.
Thank you. I, I appreciate um, the response and I also appreciate the emphasis on the learning taking place throughout the K through 12 experience. Because we certainly know just requiring, being required to take a class, much of the learning takes place outside of the classroom. So um, certainly support that. If I may throw in another question um, as well, with respect to the, our, our students who may be identified um, as 504, receiving 504 supports and those with um, identified as receiving special education supports. What are your thoughts in Gretchen? Oh, there I see Gretchen. What are your thoughts? Um, and in terms of this, the perceived stigma that some um, individuals may have with which one to kind of go for? I, I just have experienced that it seems to be more acceptable to be qualified as 504 as opposed to special ed and which is, we know is not true. Um, and so would, do you find that that um, what, what is your approach in trying to tease out if there may be a student who really does require special education services um, as opposed to what the family may be advocating for?
So Lorna, that's a really good question. Uh, we've seen across the board, the stigma of identification diminishing. You know, in all areas, 504 as well as special ed. I mean, there are still some um, classifications under IDEA for an IEP that don't feel comfortable with everyone. They don't sit as comfortably. But, but overall, we've, we've definitely seen a decrease in the stigma. Um, and mostly people just want the help. They, they want the support and able to access their education and to make, uh, make progress. And so the, the difference though is it's really about qualification. Um, IDEA sets out some very, very specific guidelines for um, eligibility for those disability categories. And so if a student doesn't meet those disability categories and we take a look at how else we can support them to make sure that they're continuing to access. It's not really a pick one or the other kind of thing. It really is about eligibility. And if we have a student with a 504 plan who's really struggling and there's evidence of a, of a disability, it's, you know, that we can find in testing, we'll go to referral and we'll look at, at all of the information. And if there's evidence of a documented disability that meets the criteria, they will certainly be offered those services.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Um, not surprised to hear that answer, but glad to hear it. Um, I have other questions, but I'm going to hold off and, and share the experience.
Okay, Liz, you're up next.
I had two questions. My first question was also about the 504s. I was interested to see that in 2000, there were no 504s. And I, I was curious about the history of that, if 504s were even in existence in 2000 or if there was something passed i- in, at some point. And now we have a pretty high number of students who have 504s and they obviously, obviously that uh, requires more resources on our part. Do you anticipate, what, what do you attribute that to? And do you anticipate that number to continue to increase? And then my other question was, I'm not familiar with smarter balance. If you could, if you could elaborate on that for me.
So the 504, um, so ADA 504 has been around for a very, very long time. It's a set of disability rights laws that, that were enacted in the seventies. And so were there 504 plans back in 2000? Um, yes, there were, but they were primarily for um, for accessibility due to physical restrictions and things like that. Um, and so we didn't keep data on that here in West Hartford, you know, way back when I was teaching back then, but I was a special education teacher. So it was, it was not in my realm and unfortunately, the, the data isn't there to support how many we had. A lot of the, the students um, probably would have had health plans too, that, that kind of sat with the nurse. And so we just viewed it very differently. It was um, kind of loose, you know, if you will. And so legislation throughout the, the next 20 years really tightened up that process. And we saw an increase in the number of 504 plans with a greater understanding of what ADA and 504 really is and what access is. And a clearer understanding about what um, you know, what a life skill is. And so if a student is impacted in a particular life skill um, that, that doesn't allow them to access at the same rate as their peers, that, that requires an accommodation, something that we can help them kind of uh, bridge that gap so that they can have equal access. It's really the essence of a 504. Um, in 2016, we uh, we all received a dear colleague letter um, that really further defined that, um, if you will. Kind of ironically, it further defined that, but it gave a less specific definition at the same time. And it really asked us to include plans for students uh, with a suspected disability. Uh, to make sure that if they were impacted by one of their major life functions, that we were providing accommodations. Um, you know, in order to provide that access.
I think it's fair to say the difficulty is the suspected disability is basically by anyone, not necessarily what we've observed.
And, and it, true, but we also may suggest the need for an accommodation. So it's, it's anyone and it could be a staff member, it could be a parent, um, it could be a student themselves um, that, that really raise a concern about access. And so, uh, so we're doing that and we're making sure that students have those accommodation plans. But in terms of me, you know, my prediction about whether or not that will increase, um, there's a chance uh, that, that it will continue to increase, um, you know, and it has resulted in some, um, some really good teaching. It brings us back to UDL, which we, you know, we kind of pulled into the district years ago, um, about how to provide access to all students. And so, um, so we're meeting those needs.
And Paul, do you want to go through the smarter balance?
Absolutely. So I was, um, smarter balance is essentially like a brand name like PepsiCo or Coca-Cola or something for state testing. So years ago, um, Connecticut had its own state test that it had developed, which was the Connecticut Mastery Test, belovedly known as the CMT. And when a couple of years after the passage of uh, the new state standards, Connecticut Core Standards or Common Core Standards, uh, once a couple of years had passed and, and those standards were presumed to take full effect uh, across classrooms in Connecticut, uh, we entered into a consortium with other states to develop a new state test, uh, the difference being this time, instead of being just uniquely our own Connecticut test, uh, we had brains um, from across uh, the country working on item writing and test specifications and such. And uh, we actually had during the time, many, many representatives from Connecticut that helped to, uh, from West Hartford, excuse me, that helped to uh, write items and serve on a variety of committees. Um, and that, that test uh, is known as the Smarter Balanced Assessment, named basically after the uh, consortium that helped to develop it. Um, the smarter balance, you know, as it lives and breathes today, does have slight differences across the states in terms of the parts and, and all the rest, but it's, but it's basically um, a uh, test, a state testing platform that's in common across a, a variety of states uh, that have chosen to use it as their state assessment for the standards.
So it's a, it's a, the, the replacement of the CMT. So it's, is it, it's testing the similar categories, reading and math and?
Absolutely. Yeah. It's a, it's a state testing system in reading and math. And then our, our state test in science has its own name called uh, NGSS, Next Generation Science. Um, but there, you know, when, when I refer to them in letters and such, just to avoid the confusion or the brand name or oh my gosh, it's changed. It's, I just try, try to refer to it, hey, this is our state assessment. Like, we're not talking about anything grandiose.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Other questions? Uh, Jason.
All right. Uh, first of all, Tom, thank you for that report though. It was uh, um, amazing, you know, window into the past and uh, you know, broad scope of what um, what we do in the district. And coming out of last, you know, the, our last meetings, you know, discussion of the budget and seeing where all the, where all of those dollars go and how they are impacting the students uh, is really powerful story. Um, and you know, I was really struck by, you know, hearing you talk about the um, the increase in um, uh, in families that are, um, that have uh, free or reduced lunch. And you know, just thinking about how the pandemic has affected our community. You know, just thinking one in four now, um, and that, that could, you know, potentially, you know, go up, in- increase. I'm just wondering what, you know, what kinds of things the district does to kind of anticipate that? Um, and you know, what, what, what does, what does the district's response look like in terms of um, you know, meeting those, those, those uh, those families and students' needs uh, as they're kind of um, expressed in formal and informal ways? as they're kind of expressed in formal and informal ways in the district?
It is very. I almost choke up when I think of the work Rosina has done with so many of our families and getting the meals, going back to last March and the days immediately afterward where that was our focus. You know, everybody thought, when are you going to reopen schools? And I can tell you, Rosina was in my office pounding her fist, we have to get them meals. And it took zero days, no days off. They had meals that Monday. So Rosina, if you want to talk about that work and the interventions you're doing and how we're looking at doing that in the future. You know.
Yeah, thank you. It's been an eye opening experience. You know, we were faced with a community that we saw so much despair, yet people were so resilient and there's still a lot of hope. And what started as, you know, a meal distribution, six meal distribution sites became like a multi operation across the district because, you know, we start, we started off with 200 volunteers, like 200. Some of you here, you know, sitting in this meeting tonight came out to just support families. And then we started to make connections with families and started to see some real significant needs that we hadn't prepared for. And so those grab and go sites became kind of our, you know, information, help center, welcome centers for our families, understanding their needs, really having conversations with them, directing them to resources. So we partner with a lot of community agencies. And part of that one community for Equity Collaborative, that we're just really seeking to galvanize this collective energy and this this think tank of brilliant resources and supports so that we can better support our families. But some of the things that we're doing require a lot of outside of the box thinking, not just distributing technology, not just distributing meals and meals on the weekend, but really connecting families with resources such as employment training opportunities. There's the SNAP EBT benefits card, right? The pandemic card. The state had to go through our district in order to get families, to identify those families and get them the the meals that they needed or were unable to access when they came out to grab and go or unable to come out to grab and go during the during those times, those hours. We did a lot of deliveries too. We have over two, we had many people delivering to families. But thinking outside the box, there are people who are displaced. So connecting them with like the housing authorities, connecting them with West Hartford Social Services, I mean, we have them on speed dial. And they've been so responsive to our needs. So it really is a collaborative effort. And it's about building a network of support, a wraparound support for our families. And so we really had to think about how we do things more. I think more creatively, use a lot more innovation as we have this year. And tapping into resources that we that weren't as accessible before. But thinking of, we're we're calling cable providers, we're calling internet providers. Hey, this isn't fair, what's going on? Or we have, we have spotty connections in some apartment buildings, calling providers to fix that. It's, you know, so and we always look at it as it's not enough. There's always something more that we can do.
Yeah, thank you for spelling that out. I mean, I think, you know, that the emergency of the pandemic, you know, demonstrates the strength, you know, that folks have here and in responding to that and moving forward, just anticipating how this will, you know, the economic condition will persist after people are vaccinated. And, you know, just that the district has experience working in that is 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 good. I did want to offer just one other kind of, you know, I guess, comment about the overall state of school report in the sense that, you know, I think sometimes when when we look at at the changing, you know, composition and makeup of different entities, it seems like there's that that there are sort of costs associated with with, you know, increased diversity or increased needs for certain populations. And that there's a kind of, you know, a price tag put on that. But I think, you know, what, to to my mind, when I see those things, I see the classroom getting better. When you have more diverse classes, you have more special ed students. I think that lifts everyone up when you have greater, you know, diversity integration and across all those spaces. And and so I think I look at that as a real enrichment of of the education experience and and something that, you know, it it may have a price tag associated with it, but that that it's not just for that population. This is about, you know, enriching everyone's experience. And and so I just really, you know, appreciate the the way, you know, the details of, you know, individual programs and the way that that they, you know, sort of bleed into these other spaces and and lift up all the schools.
You know, I'm glad you said it, Jason, because it's why we moved here, right? I mean, it's why I wanted my kids to go to school here. And what what ties into that is really anytime I talk about it, and actually, it's one of the benefits of talking about it tonight as opposed to just tied to the budget, is because then there's always this, and I never want people to think that there's a blame associated with something that we love and celebrate and choose this community for. It's just the reality of a situation. So, you know, very well said, and I appreciate you saying that.
Ari.
I just first want to thank you, Tom, for the overview. It really resonated with me only because I have a 19 year old daughter, you know, and a 16 year old son. So those changes were really during, you know, the prime school years for both of my kids. And I guess I I'm a little regret, I regret a little that we're not entering that stage now because of all the the positive changes that have happened, but I'm glad that they are occurring and that other families and children can benefit from them. I don't know if I misheard you, so I just wanted some clarification because it's news to me and I was just really interested. When you were talking about private schools within West Hartford, I think I was always under the impression that private schools did not have to follow any sort of IEP five oh four, that they really weren't bound to to those same legal regulations. So when you were saying that we, as the district, kind of help facilitate that or we are responsible, I was surprised. So I was wondering, can you just elaborate on that a little bit for me?
I have just the person to question.
Well, I assume so.
So Ari, it takes us back to Childfind. And so as a district, we have, we have an obligation to identify all students with disabilities. And so any child that attends a school in West Hartford is is our charge, is our responsibility. And so in a private school setting, if a student is suspected of having a disability, anyone has the right to ask for a referral PPT. And it's our responsibility to go to that referral PPT, look at all the evidence, work with the private schools and determine whether or not testing is appropriate. And if testing is appropriate, then we conduct that testing and we we determine whether or not the the child is eligible for special education services. If they are, at that point, we develop a private school service plan, which is the private school version of an IEP. And it basically says the child is eligible under the following mandate. And if the child were to go to our schools, these are some of the things that we'd recommend that they do. And then the parent has a choice and they're they're fully aware and they have full knowledge of what the options are in a public school setting versus the setting that they've chosen. They also can then access a small amount of our IDEA funding. And so so we put aside a certain amount every year. And it's a mathematical calculate calculation as to how much that is every year. But a parent of a student with a private school service plan can access, this year it's about $1,700 for tutoring, if if they're found eligible and they have a PSSP. And there are some hoops to jump through in order to access that funding, but it does come through our IDEA grant. But it is also our obligation to make sure that we monitor that plan annually and and determine whether or not every three years they're still eligible, which means testing. So for about 80 students who attend school at a private school in West Hartford, you know, that that is something that one of our department supervisors oversees, but a lot of our providers also do that testing. And and this year, we've done it in a special way outside of the school day to make sure that everyone's feeling comfortable and safe with the assessments. And so I I appreciate that the districts supported that because we're we're continuing to meet those needs as well.
Thank you. Interesting. You know, I I think of a lot of families that don't know the services that they're even within public school are eligible for. And I I just wonder if parents of private school children and adolescents are aware, you know, are made aware that they have this available to them.
So part of the qualification for the IDEA grant is that I'm required to meet with all of the private schools every year. So every May, we we have a little breakfast or last year it was virtual, it'll be virtual again this year. And I make sure that they're aware of our Childfind obligations and what the process looks like. They can ask questions. But I can assure you that with 80 private school service plans in our community, they they know Marie Davis very, very well. She is our out of district department supervisor. And they're they are familiar with the process. And so they work with us in making sure that families understand what what their rights are.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I think it's a lot to digest. So if there aren't any additional questions, don't take that as a lack of interest on the.
Certainly not.
Part of Board of Ed members.
I'm sure to think you're so thorough, how could there possibly be a question?
That's it. That's it. Oh, wait, there, I think there are a few more questions. Sorry about them. We'll go Jason and then Lorna.
So thank you, Lorna. Sorry to jump ahead. I know you had questions. So one thing I I was just hoping to get a kind of overview. You know, not, you know, you don't have to go into as much detail as as you did with some of the other dimensions. But I'd love to hear how professional development has changed over like that 20 year arc. And how have teacher preparations and teacher training and professional development evolved or changed? Or what are kind of those benchmarks in in the district? Thanks.
I'll drop on that, Tom, if you are. Yeah, I will. But I will say, Jason, what's interesting, you bring it up, bring that up. It was 25 years ago today, I got my student teaching place with a hall high school. So that's, go ahead, Paulie.
So, I mean, professional development is changing in a couple of big ways over the last 20 years, not the least of which is, you know, there's there's the ebb and the flow of some of the required professional development. The state has actually backed off on some of that. Back when I was in the classroom and Tom will remember this, I think there was a at some point, you know, the state had said, hey, we recognize the need for people like this technology, this internet thing. It it might just catch on, right? So there was a requirement to have a certain number of technology. You know, professional learning hours that that were going to be every year. And and, you know, obviously, as that became more of a an everyday skill, the state removed that requirement. Right now, we're in the throes, just from the sense of mandated professional learning, the state's in the throes at the elementary. It's timely because our our elementary staff just went through this, that they have to take our K through three staff absent, if you have a special certification, have to take a biannual assessment of their of their skill in in terms of teaching and diagnosing reading, foundational reading strategies and and interventions. And that is used at as the district level. The state then turns the data back to us and we can use it for our own professional learning. We've obviously, as a district, as we've had and identified our own, you know, key learning targets and and key drivers in our district development plan, we've developed both mandatory and and optional sort of customizable, flexible professional learning around it. Certainly not the least of which has been our ongoing work over the last more than five years, but I think we can go back seven or eight years, Rosina, to when we had the real kickoff with cultural competence back with a mandatory professional learning that that hosted a very, very dynamic speaker in the name of Calvin Terrell. And since that time, we've we've really grown, not only our our partnerships, but but our own depth of learning and how we can how we can customize that to meet people kind of more where they are at an individual level and not have it be a one size fits all, but but really have, you know, a broad range of professional learning around that. We've changed our structures when we started, when I started looking at professional learning 20 years ago, we had a workshop series. We had a kind of the sit and get model where we would cluster three Wednesdays together in succession and teachers would go for two hours. Recently, I think it was four or five years ago, we went to a more collaborative model where we could sustain a learning theme over the course of the year so that we could take six different Wednesday two hour series or two hour workshop kind of times, space them out over the course of the year and make them more flexible for teachers so that they could so that they could design, they could choose and design professional learning activities that were individualized to their needs. And that that happened to fit. I think we did that truthfully, we did that on our own. I think we were one or maybe two years ahead. Then it matched kind of a big a big piece in the new teacher evaluation system where the state said, hey, wouldn't it be great if all districts could make the professional learning individualized to what teachers need? And we're like, hey, we kind of just just did that. We just changed it and made it in that direction. And that was feedback from one of our structures that we have that used to be called the Curriculum and Professional Development Council is now called the Professional Learning and Evaluation Committee. But a but a collaborative group of teachers, special educators, administrators, really library media specialists, folks from every walk of life across every building and grade level and job description that that meet and and talk about what are the big goals for the district, what are the big professional development goals? And what are the things that we need to do to meet them? As we move forward, you know, you know, as a board, our commitment to our ongoing work within cultural competence, within social justice, within social emotional learning, deepening that work, our commitment to the relevance of 21st century skills that are embedded within our best instructional practices that we've talked about, and not the least of which are our ongoing work in in taking really the skills embedded within computer science and integrating them into instruction across all content areas, K through 12. So it's not a course, but a but a but a way of thinking and preparing students for the world they're going to live in, not the world that we grew up in, but the world that they're going to live and thrive in and that's a that's a long winded answer, but hopefully I hit some of your questions.
Jason, any else?
Sorry. Yes, got the got the thumbs up.
Great. Lorna and then Mark and then Liz.
I'll say the collective voice of my colleagues, they have answered or asked other questions or they've been answered along the way. I do just want to make the point that I really appreciate, again, with respect to how we speak about clear paths and bright futures and no and no limits and how clear is clearing the path is a verb. I think that's really, really important for all of us to remember that it's something that we have to actively be a part of. It's not just a passive participant. So thank you for ensuring that that is something that we are all committed to doing. So thank you for uh ensuring that that is something that we are all committed to doing uh now and moving forward, so thank you again.
Thank you, Mark.
Tom, can you provide us with the uh the slides from today's presentation?
Yeah, they'll they'll all be posted online and then and you'll all have them, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Well, that's it. All right, uh, Liz.
Uh, yes, I just had a question about the per pupil spending. Um. First of all, I was just curious about how that was calculated, and then I was also wondering. We dropped below the the average, state average, and how do we feel about that?
Oh, we've been below the state average for a long time, actually, we've, I will say that this board over the past five years um has moved up. So um, Liz, do you want to give the just pure mathematical formula of the per pupil expenditure?
Certainly, it's a um state calculation, it just looks at all of our expenditures over the course of the year. As it relates to um both general fund spending, spending for employee benefits, grants, et cetera. And just divides that by the sti- the number of pupils that we have as of ten one, uh, October first, always being the measurement date.
And so what you'll, I'm sorry, go ahead, Liz.
No, that's okay, I was just gonna say, and then the state provides information as to where we rank compared to all the districts in the state.
And so we've been as low as a hundred and twenty-second during my time as superintendent. So being up to a hundred and two um reflects, I'd love to say that we've had the richest budgets here and it's reflected that. Um, the fact is, we've had pretty modest budgets, there's been significant cuts in some districts that has that have pushed them um below West Hartford. So whereas what we'll do when I present the budget, I'll show you where we would be if we spent at the state average. And I'll show you where we would be if we spent at the Dirk B average um and how much more expensive it would be. That's one of the things I typically do when I introduce the budget, so more information will come on that next week.
Do you also have a comparison to to some of the other districts who are average or above and how they're spending their money?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the Dirk B is Dirk B is our comparison reference group, which I would argue and most would that that's who we want to be compared to in terms of achievement. But how similar we actually are to Simsbury, Avon, Farmington and South Windsor and um some of the Gold Coast towns, Greenwich is debatable. Um, but when you look at our per pupil expenditures versus theirs versus our outcomes versus who our students are. Um, it's it's pretty dramatic, so yeah, I'll provide information for that and we do it every year, so there's historical slides to look at that every year.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
Other questions? Okay, um, really, just checking, okay, it looks like uh we're all good on this one, thank you very much. Um, I suspect we may have additional questions on some of this. And I also suspect you'll be tying this in with your presentation at our next meeting, uh, so if any questions come up, uh, people can get ready to ask them then. So thank you, are there any other staff reports and board discussions? Tom usually kind of give us an update about school things at this point.
Yeah, um, school things are where they are, our our numbers are, um, you know, that was, that was a big update on school things. You know, our COVID numbers continue to decrease, which is very good, all the metrics that I wrote about, my communication to families. Um, at the end of last week have continued to trend in the right direction. And um, we'll continue to look at that, but we are um very cautiously optimistic. Um, that we can have people back and and meet them at their needs um as we move into the future, so. So that's where we are.
Great, thank you, any questions on that piece? All right, uh, we will move on then to routine matters and the approval of minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting from February second, twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion? So move. Thank you, Amanda, is there a second?
Second.
What's that, I missed that, Liz? Uh, thank you, and any discussion on the minutes? If not, I will try your minds, um, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye, aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay, abstentions? And the ayes have it, the minutes are approved, thank you, we'll move on to information and reports. Board members, communication and reports and reports from other boards and organizations. I know we have an update um from Amanda for the bridge and Jason, so we'll start with Amanda.
Great, thank you, and I know it's getting late, everybody, and I appreciate um the opportunity to, I asked the bridge to give us an update tonight because of the fact that we were doing the state of the schools. And this really helps give us an extended snapshot of how our kids are doing, and I hope that for people who are watching from home that you'll stick with us and continue to listen. So this will just give you a sense of how our kids are doing um with regard to some of the school-based counseling and their other mental and social health needs. So for those of you who don't know, the Bridge Family Center is the Contracted Youth Services Bureau for the town of West Hartford. They also operate our West Hartford Teen Center, which is open to children, teenagers in grades nine through twelve who live in West Hartford. And whether or not they go to a public school or not, and they also operate the Family Resource Center. So I just want to give you a snapshot of how things are going from oldest to youngest. Um, the school-based counseling program continues to serve students in the West Hartford Public Schools who need outside clinical support. Most of the services are being done through telehealth platform right now, but we are doing some, the bridge is doing some services. Um, for clients who are need needing them in person, and those are right now are our youngest clients. And also the kids who have a more complex um situation going on. The help, they're helping the majority of the kids to schedule sessions outside of school hours so that they don't miss instruction time. But the bridge therapists and the West Hartford school staff have collaborated and been really flexible to try to find extra space and support within the schools. So that they can do some in-school work um where that has been needed. And that's led to, that collaboration has led to some really strong engagement, particularly with kids who've been hard to connect with. So when we talk about kids who are slipping through the cracks, that in-school support has been really helpful. Um, the the school-based therapists from the bridge have had to be really creative, as you can imagine, in engaging them, um, there's a lot of screen fatigue. So they they're dancing, drawing, playing online games, um, sometimes they use videos to talk about different issues and feelings that are coming up. The therapists are reporting back that they're they're helping students to process higher than normal levels of anxiety and depressive symptoms. And some kids are reporting feelings of hopelessness as they don't feel there's anything to look forward to. And as you would imagine, they're also hearing a lot of reports from students who are feeling isolated and missing their friends. So when we think about these issues for kids, um, there's a lot of good work going on, but there's more work than. We would like, obviously, um, the bridge is running virtual groups. And these are working despite the screen fatigue because the kids really like working and and being together. So they're enjoying the connection, um, and the bridge is being really sensitive to how they're naming the groups. We have a lot of kids in the West Hartford Public School systems at all age levels who are exploring gender identity. And when that comes up in the group settings, um, they're being very careful about how they're managing that um to be most supportive of students who are um exploring their gender identities. Under an additional agreement that we had, that the bridge has with the West Hartford Public Schools. They have gone live with some new services that are helping secondary school kids who are in the remote learning environment. So they're offering direct emotional and social support, and they're hosting a series of parent support sessions um for parents of elementary and secondary learners. And those are currently being scheduled with the remote learning school staff. The bridge also does mentoring within the schools, and usually that's done in free periods, lunch periods. But in this setting, they've had to be more creative, that the program is also thriving and is at capacity for the school year for middle and high school students. So the sessions are in-person and virtual, and the majority of them are actually taking place in the community. And they're actually working on combining healthy recreation with the social support. And while the focus is meant to be individual with adult and student mentor mentees. Though they're also trying to engage students at a deeper level because there's themes of changing friendships, um, family dynamics, loss. And how to stay focused on future planning in the midst of a pandemic, those are all issues coming up, especially for our middle and high school students. Um, at the teen center, and this is the last piece for our older students, um, the last time we checked in, it was primarily at Beachland Park and the engagement was very low. But since the COVID um restrictions have eased up a bit, um, and they've been able to move back into the um Elmwood Community Center. In the basement, the kids have the teen center there where there's a gym and there's a multipurpose room. Um, they've actually been able to resume their their programming and with the COVID restriction cap, um, they have a capacity limit of twenty-five people. In the area, including staff, but they've been at capacity and nearly full uh every single week. And there's been a pre-registration model where the students can sign up um on the teen center Instagram page. And they have activities like basketball, ping pong, um, there's all kinds of things going on there, so please reach out if you're in the high schools, especially for our student representatives. Um, there's some really good things going on there and it's helping for student engagement. Okay, our youngest kids, um, the bridge operates the Family Resource Center. And one thing which is really important to know is that the West Hartford Public Schools and the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood. Have worked with the F R C, the Family Resource Center, in an effort to reach out to the families who decided to hold their kids. Um, back from preschool or kindergarten this year, so when we talk about what's going on with those kids. Um, West Hartford Public School staff went and identified nineteen families. And the F R C staff then connected with them, spent a great deal of time with them on the phone and in other ways. Making sure that they were aware of resources uh for that, for the preschool and kindergarten age demographic. And they were also given um a package of high-quality early childhood educational supplies to help support some of that work going on at home. They also have had in-person learning playgroups, again, this is really important for young children. So for November and December, the F R C staff um led these walks around West Hartford neighborhoods. Um, and even as the weather turned colder, they had twenty-nine families who brought thirty-seven kids from zero to four. Um, to Trout Brook Trail, they went to Northwest Park, Our Farm, um, Spice Bush, all over the community. And when the weather turned colder, still, the families remained um eager for this connection. And so the F R C staff continued this, and now we currently, even in these temperatures, there's twenty babies and toddlers still participating in these early learning playgroups, which is wonderful. They also created remote playgroups, so for January and February, they added virtual learning for families who have young children. Um, and via Zoom, they they have this program called Little Scientists, it does steam-based activities. And there's thirty-four kids participating in that, each of the families gets a tote bag with books and it's very well thought out and well done. They also have a music class for um birth to four, and that's presented in partnership with the New Old School of Music. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that um they're continuing to distribute gift cards to families with basic needs. And for people who know that Charter Oak, um, that F R C is is within the building of Charter Oak. They've had a um musical that they've done for over twenty years, and there's usually a cast of sixty kids in grades three, four and five. This year, they obviously couldn't do that in person, so they're partnering with the Playhouse on Park to provide a virtual theater classes after school. For up to forty-five kids in grades kindergarten through grade five on Tuesday and Thursday afternoons in upcoming March and April. So if you're interested in that, um, the registration begins in late February. So I just want to thank the the staff at the bridge, um, they work so carefully and closely with the West Hartford Public School staff. And it's sometimes hard to tell the difference among the groups. And um that seamless working relationship that they've practiced over all of these years kicked in um during COVID. And we're continuing to see an immense amount of personalized support. So we just want to thank um everyone in the community who's helping with that, and um thanks to the bridge for for keeping our kids as well as they can be, along with our West Hartford school staff.
Thank you, Amanda, that was very comprehensive, uh, Jason.
Right, um, oh, uh, thank you, Amanda, um, so I I attended the uh February four uh board meeting for the West Hartford Community Interactive. And I just wanted to, you know, share some of the highlights that that kind of that came out in that meeting, just because they were uh. Um, they seem important both for, you know, for the the health and operation of of that. Um, that public entity, but then also the the interactions that it has with West Hartford Public Schools. Um, and first of all, what was noted was the strength of the Martin Luther King Day uh celebration and programming. And that that was, you know, a really, you know, strong, you know, example of kind of community, school and town partnership. Um, that really, you know, um, you know, highlighted, you know, a lot of, a lot of strengths. Um, and going forward, that that was a kind of model of of looking at programming and looking at uh ways of of building um uh community engagement through uh things like that. Um, then also, you know, I was really struck by the the slate of um African-American Heritage Month, um, you know, programs uh from from the station. Um, and then also in service to the athletics programs for uh for the for public schools was uh their airing of uh swimming and gymnastics. As that was going forward. Um, and then go, and then uh in addition to that, the, you know, serve uh the service that they provide to so many other parts of the local government. Um, was really astounding to learn about, um, and in in the midst of that, uh, still having a relatively balanced budget. Uh, there was a CARES Act uh support that helped offset some costs from Comcast, that were, or lost revenue from Conca- Comcast. Um, and um, and so that 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 has still, you know, sustained the the station. Um, and the the one thing that I I do want to pass along is that this is a a membership drive now too. And that um, the uh, the public schools have have given, you know, the uh W H C I its um, uh, 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 disbursement. But, you know, individually, you know, I think we can all become members uh uh and and support the, you know, the um. Uh, W H C I in that way too, because this is, uh, they're going to face similar kinds of financial pressures. And they, you know, really serve to connect us and 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 really help the schools out, so thank you.
Thank you, any other um reports from board members liaising with community groups? Okay, thank you, uh, we'll move on to the reports from student board representatives and we'll start with Rashille.
Hello, everyone, uh, thank you very much for today's presentation. I'm going to be discussing a few things, events at Connord first regarding Black History Month. Each school day, Connord has been recognizing African-American figures and their accomplishments through the morning announcements and also on Connord's Instagram page. Today, we learned about the work of Sir John Earth Truth and Etha Mainly. The Connord Art Department also created a mural for commemorating Black History Month outside the cafeteria. School counselors in the coming weeks have also planned on creating career clusters for students and Connord's librarians have displayed books. Written by African-American authors in a library. Lastly, there are plans for an in-school field trip for students to engage with the panel of Connord and Hall students on topics related to Black History Months. Students will be able to meet and ask questions to their peers on such topics. Um, moving on to the musical, the Connord Performing Arts Department is presenting Connord's annual musical Little Woman, the Broadway Musical. Um, this will be available to purchase through video on demand beginning in April. We are very excited to be presenting this musical, especially this year, considering the challenges that the theater had to overcome due to the pandemic. We hope people across the community will watch and enjoy this year's musical. Um, athletics are going very strong this winter, students are extremely excited for the sports season. Sports in general have always been a way for to bring the com- school community together, and it means even a whole lot more this year. Um, as Mr. Moore already mentioned, I wanted to congratulate Connord's Natalie Dela Cruz again for being named a U S Senate Youth Program winner. She will receive a ten thousand dollar scholarship and attend the Washington Week online in March, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Lily.
Thank you.
Thank you. At Hall, winter sports are currently in full swing, and games are being livestreamed on YouTube. Some recent notable victories are girls' and boys' basketball, who both won their games against Connord last week. So congratulations to those teams. Next week, Hall is excited to collaborate with other West Hartford schools in a district-wide virtual panel discussion for Black History Month, which is focused on the topic of the Black family. The panel will occur next Wednesday during Block Two, and speakers will include current students, alumni, and other West Hartford community members. And similarly to Connord, as Rashil mentioned, every day of February, over the morning announcements, we're learning about kind of a lesser-known fact about Black history. And the Hall Instagram shares a profile of an important Black American every, every morning. Last weekend, this week, Hall's choir group, Voche, has been delivering their famous Voche Valentines virtually in celebration of Valentine's Day. While they would normally stop by the classrooms to serenade the students with love songs, this year, they are crashing Google Meets to sing to the class instead. Hall students Sophia Imatola, Nora Holmes, Claire O'Brien, Kate Sanderson, Charles Wang, Monica Wheeler, and Grace Wright Goodison have all been recognized for their outstanding writing in the 2021 Scholastic Writing Awards. And Grace Wright Goodison has also been selected as a semifinalist in the 28th Annual Letters About Literature Contest. Congratulations to all those students on such a great accomplishment. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Future business, announcement of future meeting dates. Our next meeting is Tuesday, March 2nd, where we will receive the presentation of the superintendent's budget proposal. We will be back here on Google Meets. After that, we have a budget workshop on Wednesday, March 10th at 7:00 p.m., then a regular Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, March 16th at 7:00 p.m., and a Board of Ed public hearing about the budget, followed by a budget workshop on Wednesday, March 24th. All of those dates are on our website, so if you missed it, it's okay. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Okay, if not, are there any visitors who've joined us who would like to provide any public comment at this time? I don't think there is anybody else on the line. All right. We do not have an executive session, and so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Lorna. Is there a second?
Second, Jason Chen.
Thank you, Jason. Without further ado, meeting is adjourned at 9:33 p.m. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
Thanks. Take care.